All right, I'm starting the broadcast now.
Okay, thank you. Let me know when to start.
All right, you're live.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the 5:00 PM January 11, 2021 Board of Trustees Village of America work session. What we're going to do tonight has been, as has been our want, is to go into advice to counsel executive session first. Tonight on about council, we have 1:30 Beach Avenue. We have discussion of the Board of Police Commission's roles and responsibilities, great police reform and reinvention committee. We have a discussion about water line and flagler drive. An executive session is manage as well as personnel matter, which we will handle first because we have two attorneys waiting in the other room. And that's anticipated their motion will be offered into executive session pursuant to 1051 F of the New York State Public Offices Law as it relates to medical, financial and credit employment history of a particular person. Item B in executive session is a litigation update. It is anticipated that emotion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to 1051 D of the New York State Public Offices Law to review matters of proposed pending or current litigation. And item number C is to save the sound lawsuit. Proposed order to Village of America is anticipated that emotion will be offered to executive session pursuant to 1051 D of the New York State Public Offices Law to discuss matters of process pending and current litigation. Because that being said, and just on a, on a process discussion, when we go into executive session, originally just the Board of Trustees and Danielle on. And Danielle will go into executive session. And then I will tell everybody else when to come in after we've had that discussion. Okay, so those, does anybody want to make that motion?
One more thing before you make. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I just, just for the record, I, I submitted an email written notice to the board, to the ethics board, to the village attorney manager giving notice that I'm, I'll recuse in the save the sound lawsuit, which is the last matter D that you mentioned, so I will not participate, I will sue, I will get out of the meeting when that comes.
Okay, it's actually let us see just to correct the record. Okay, it's actually let us see just to correct the record.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for letting us know that and do email and it'll be. Thank you for letting us know that and do email and it'll be.
I'd also like to add one other thing, which is emails, which would be 1051 F. I'd also like to add one other thing, which is emails, which would be 1051 F.
For what? For what?
Regarding emails that, that have been sent. Regarding emails that, that have been sent.
Is there an exemption for emails? Is there an exemption for emails?
It has to do with the same thing in terms of personnel. It has to do with the same thing in terms of personnel.
Good. Good. Somebody want to make a motion? Somebody want to make a motion?
Dan, that's for executive session or advice to counsel?
Dan, that's for executive session or advice to counsel?
It's executive session, it has to do with the labor lawyers. It's executive session, it has to do with the labor lawyers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, somebody has to make a motion. Okay, somebody has to make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Who we see them? Who we see them? Trustees Lucas? Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Yes.
Winter? Winter?
Yes.
Yes.
That does? That does?
Yes. Yes.
Before? Before?
Yes. Yes.
Ma'am Murphy? Ma'am Murphy?
Hi. Hi. I'll see you in executive session. I'll see you in executive session.
Okay, goodbye all.
Okay, goodbye all.
Just a minute.
How do I get into the regular meeting on this?
You're you're in mayor. You're in the regular meeting.
We're gonna skip right to the thing that Nora wanted to do.
Oh, thank you.
What number letter is that?
Two A.
Okay, good.
We don't want to wait till April to discuss this.
Oh, let's discuss it now.
Yeah.
Good.
Good evening. Board of Trustees, work session. We have just come out of executive session. In executive session, we took a vote. The vote was, I made the motion seconded by trustee Wenstrup to enforce a building violations and seek civil penalties against the 130 Beach Avenue. And also to seek an injunction against the occupancy of the premises. That was a three to two vote. And that's all I have to report out of that meeting. Now, we're gonna skip items because there's an item that trustee Lucas wanted to discuss that has a timely nature to it. And it is item two A on your on your playing card at home if you're watching. Staffing for village board meetings. Jerry, you want to give an overview of this?
Mayor, we have this multi-point plan in order to help us get through the remainder of the year. It includes items such as such as freezing positions that are unoccupied right now or unfilled right now. It includes tightening up on the purchasing by requiring department heads to to fill out a purchase order for a reduced amount than normal. It also requires attention to overtime and so part of the attention to overtime and potential reduction of overtime is the the night meetings that are staffed by our by our employees. And most of those are, of course, you know, committee meetings and head hot committee meetings and commission meetings. And so my recommendation was to the board to cancel and postpone three months of those committee meetings, obviously keep the Board of Trustees meetings and the required land use committee meetings going. But all of the others just take a pause for three months so that we could potentially save. We spend about $3,000, $3,500 a month on overtime staffing the meetings. And there are quite a few. Our community, our our village government has a lot of has a lot of committees. And so in order to support them, it is a requirement to have a Zoom host for those meetings. There may be some ways to mitigate that. The Board of Trustees in a couple of discussions on email have the liaisons for those committees, if they have a liaison, have offered to host the committee meeting. And so we provided instructions for the Board of Trustees member liaison to support the committee meeting. We also have, you know, the ability to just cancel it and and resume again in April. What I'm looking to do is I'm just looking to tighten up on the amount of money we spend so that we can not be in a deficit come May 31st.
As I see it, there's a couple of issues. I looked at what is required to host a meeting on Zoom and to do it properly and to notice it. And I know I would screw that up. You know, the people who do this do this all the time and they do this every day. So this this is a question I have and Mr. Spozino, you might want to hear this. My question is, would it be possible under the emergency order that we put out every week to suspend the requirements of open meetings law for advisory committees?
I mean, those can those committees that are required to comply with the open meetings law by virtue of the village code, not by virtue of state law.
Correct. Advisory committees that we we made work under constraints of the open meetings law a couple of years back, which I think in in mind was very well intentioned and I was supportive of it, but maybe didn't work out the way we thought it was gonna work out.
Well, it's only eight committees. Right? Four of them are gonna meet because they're land use committees. So it's art council, arts council, which I actually think has to reply comply with the open meetings law anyway, because they can make decisions and spend money. The traffic commission. And the ethics board, which has to comply with the open meetings law. So it doesn't seem like
Budget.
It's not, but we didn't. We didn't adopt it for budget.
Environment.
Didn't adopt it for committee for the environment.
It's it's part of our backup.
Yeah, so there's but there's just eight committees. So it's not budget. It's not the ad hoc tennis committee or the ad hoc year round rec committee, which hasn't met. It's not which really it's not the ad hoc ethics review code committee. It's probably not. It's not flood mitigation.
But we're requiring them right now to work under.
No, 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 we only required eight committees in this law. We didn't require everyone to do it. Well, so I guess the reason I put this on was because when Jerry had when we Jerry first sort of have this initiative, we thought that the overtime was really limited to the actual meetings. So if a trustee liaison who has to be at the meeting could run the meeting, that might obviate overtime. But it seems like there. I don't really think it's a good idea to give the Board of Trustees access to the website. I mean, you don't want more people monkeying with the website. So I so it was just so like that the staff could set up the meeting and that, you know, I would run my three or actually only two of them because one of them has to have a staff person there. And I had said I would run the ad hoc ethics committee. Maybe the committees that don't have to comply with the open meetings law could meet on Zoom. But there still has to be a village account. I mean, it can't be a private account recorded and then it goes on YouTube later. But it isn't a live meeting. It isn't a live streamed meeting.
We would. We would have to add additional accounts.
To do that.
Well.
The trustees couldn't share one account.
No, we'd have to. We'd have to add additional.
Okay.
Question, is it necessary to record the meeting of a one of the committees that doesn't have to comply with open meetings law? Let's say the Marine Education Center.
Yeah, right. I agree.
I mean, it's not necessary. If somebody, if someone from that committee were doing it on their, you know, personal Zoom account, they could record it and send the tape, right? Couldn't we give it to the village to put online afterwards if we wanted to? For those committees that don't have to comply with open meetings law, that's a different story.
Question is, if you if you can wait, if we we're not required to record it, that's that's my question.
Yeah. So why do we need it online? That's my 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 amendment to his question is if we don't need it recorded, why does it have to be online?
Well, it doesn't. I would say, I I mean, the the committees that I the the committees that I'm liaison for are parking wrecks and they need a staff person. So that's out. There's no point in having having a parking wreck committee meeting without the parking wreck staff. And arts and tree, which which I think do have to comply with the open meetings law, regardless of what we require them.
Free.
I I was gonna be the liaison to the ad hoc ethics committee. They are. They would like to be able to have their meetings broadcast after they have them, just in the spirit of transparency. So they're could have a meeting. It could be recorded and it could be put on YouTube later. I don't know. And I think that would be true of the budget committee. So we would be complying with the open meetings law and being even more transparent than we're required to be. And I think considering, you know, what we're going. I mean, the ad hoc ethics committee got started late. They've met every week for like two months. And they're like, you know, 70 to 80% finished. They'd like to be able to finish in January or February. And the budget committee is certainly a committee that we could use input from. So I don't know whether we want to figure out a way of doing this without busting the budget and being as transparent as possible.
Well, it seems to me, maybe I'm wrong. I went through all of the things and I'm probably the least electronically talented is the entire group here. But most of most of the technical things are done during the day. So they're not over time. So when the meeting meeting notices are created, the things are set up, all of that is done beforehand. Then a question is, you run the meeting. You have to be able to recognize people. You know, start start the live feed, etc. I gather we have two live feeds. One is Zoom and one is whatever it is. I don't even know YouTube or something like that. So
Correct, right.
You know, so there's a there's a little bit of information that needs to be transferred so that it can be done, but it it's not, you know, I for better or for worse, I use Zoom a lot for my day job. And I'm able to most of the time handle that reasonably well. But we, you know, and we can record it. And that's not a big. You hit record when you're done, you hit stop, you know. The the rest of it, what happens afterwards is all done during the day, not at night. We would not be adding overtime, you know, to be able to run, you know, some of the meetings, depending on which ones we decided to do, not to do. Okay. You know, it is, you know, it's a suggestion. You know, I think there are. There are some committees that, you know, would be very helpful to get their input during the next three months, particularly the budget committee.
You know, would it make sense in cases like the budget committee where the open meetings law might not apply if that we just have those committee members meet and take action minutes and post those, make those public? That way there's transparency as to what they're doing, but not every word is, you know, recorded and posted.
Well, recording it is easy. You hit record. You know, it it's that that's not a big deal. The 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 issue of setting up the meeting and sending out the notices is, you know, you I understand requires a license or something, you know, access, etc. That but that's all done during the day. That doesn't add. That doesn't add time afterwards. The the rest of it, you know, handled. I mean, it's not a big. It seems to me to be we we in fact split split the split the issues of the 20 or some odd things that were set forth.
So so this is the way I see it. Either we postpone the meetings for a few months and resume in April or we pay for additional accounts, one for each trustee who wants to liaison and run the meeting. And then we set up the meeting during the day, non overtime. And then the meeting is hosted and run as a liaison would. The meeting at night. And if you want us to do that, we can do that. There's additional cost with the with the Zoom account per month. That's 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 the board's decision if they want to decide that. And, you know, whether whether you want to run that meeting or 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 push that meeting off, that would be that would be up to you.
And I think
What would the cost be per, you know, per?
It's 55 per month per account, right? Augie, am I right?
That is correct.
So we'd add additional accounts. And that would be an additional cost.
Well, I mean, if I did it, it would only be for two me. I only have two boards that could meet arts and 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 tree because parks and rec needs a staff person. And I would say for budget and the ad hoc ethics board, they really could do it by themselves and simply take minutes and send the video to the village because the video could could Cliff post a video that somebody else sent. You have to compress it. I know when you record, you have to compress it.
So so Nora, my apprehension with someone using their own account is the same as when I tell someone to use their personal phone for village business.
Yeah, okay.
So if we're gonna get an account, we're gonna give them an account. It's a little gets a little.
So it's gonna be about 70, $770 to do this if all five trustees sign on board.
Or you have something to say.
Everybody really should have. Everybody's gonna have a co-host, but you should designate a co-host. Should you not be able to get there or you're having computer problem? The whole co-host can take over the meeting.
But the co-host doesn't have to have a village account, right? They could have.
Does need an independent license.
They have to have an actual license. Yeah, right. But it could be somebody on the. It could be somebody on the committee that has.
Things happen. If I can't get through Cliff logs on, if if Cliff can't get through Sally logs on. So behind the scenes, there's a lot of things going on.
No, I know. I've had. We I've had a couple of times when there wasn't a host and then we made phone calls and we were able to do it. So I guess what I'm saying is if the liaison can't make the meeting, the meeting just gets canceled. I'm just saying that's not perfect. This is like for three months. So.
Let's let's make a list of what what are those committees that would run under this system and which ones are not. And I actually have one other one that doesn't have the liaison, which is the Board of Ethics. I think the Board of Ethics should should operate if we can accommodate something. They do have to receive the disclosures in in February. So just kind of waiting until April, I I think it's probably gonna be too much for them. I I I I think at least one meeting should be should be organized for them to to set up to 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 name the chair and to meet at least once.
They might agree to meet during the day because
Correct.
You can just tell them if you if you need to meet, you need to do it during the day.
If it's one time like Victor's recommending, we could easily accommodate that.
Yeah, because they did enough meeting during the day in the past couple of years.
Yep.
Somebody should do it. Jerry or somebody, but I think they should be approached that that they're not left into in the in the outer space that they are. They do belong. they are, they do belong and they, they can work, so.
I, I was just going to say, so this list that's part of our backup task needed to run Zoom meetings and it's twenty items. So I, I think what we're discussing now is that a trustee liaison, if they had an account, could run the meeting. The notice would be taken care of during the day by village staff. And I think items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty would be taken care of by village staff after the meeting. That's the pull the meetings recordings and transcripts back, post the metadata and learn how to use FFmpeg to, that, those things which are technical. Could staff handle those in follow-up to the meetings, Jerry, during the day?
Yeah, we do that now, yeah.
Okay, okay. So I guess it's whether we want to spend fifty-five dollars a month. I, I, I would feel very uncomfortable asking a committee member to use their own Zoom account to be like a backup host. I think, I think it's just safer to say if the liaison isn't there, it doesn't happen, you know.
I, I think that's, I think that's fine.
That's the best we could do right now.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to be backing up each other for meetings either. I mean, I guess we could, but.
So is everybody comfortable with the path we discussed? Understands it?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, you understand it?
Yeah, so we would purchase each trustee.
You don't need to purchase me.
So we would purchase four accounts for trustee liaisons to run their meeting. And we would set up the meeting during the day and then the, the liaison would host the meeting at the regularly scheduled committee or commission meeting time provided. And so the, it's up to the liaison to schedule the meeting or to push the meeting off, correct?
Yes, sir.
Or, 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 or a different date if sometimes. But whatever, whatever the date is that's established.
Yeah, you negotiate that with the committee. We've done that at Tree Committee multiple times, yeah.
And I want to do it again, Jerry.
Everybody's comfortable with that?
Good.
Yes, with, with one, with one caveat, I, I would go, I would discuss this with a Marine Education Center with the chair. Maybe, I don't know if, if, I think that meeting is during the day.
It is.
So, and, and does do, do village employees have an account or does?
Not, not all.
No, not all of them. So, so Kyle, if you're asking Victor about Kyle, Kyle, Kyle. Augie, Kyle, Kyle has a YouTube but doesn't have a village Zoom account, correct?
My knowledge is not have the village Zoom account.
Yeah, she would have to get one.
So don't get one for me until we talk with, with Peter and, because the other is the fire council and that's in person at least so far.
Yeah, there's indication that they might be going to Zoom, Victor, over there as well.
Okay. But they run it, that one, they run it. We don't have to buy.
Yes, they run it, they run it.
They run, okay. Hold it for me.
We're going to move on. We, we, there's, there's something.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
There's something on for regular meetings. It should be very short.
Just, just one quick, quickly, Jerry, the Budget Committee is supposed tomorrow night, can do this for tomorrow night or postpone that for a week or something like that, find another date?
Maybe find another date just to give Augie Cliff some time to.
Okay, no, I, I, I don't want to unduly press somebody, but I just, I owe them an email to let them know, so, okay.
Yeah, if we can pick another date, that would help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you're on a budget committee and you're watching, pick another day. All right, I'm going to go to item two C, which is on for a regular meeting. This should be a quickie. These are free bids. Well, actually, two came in for a snowplow. Jerry, the winner is Ortiz Walden.
Yeah, so Mayor, during the transition period, when Barry was just finishing up with his time at the Parks Department and then Tony took over the ordering of these trucks, we were remiss in getting plows. Obviously, the parks trucks, four-wheel-drive parks trucks should have plows on them because they're responsible for parking lots and could be of assistance to the DPW. So we're asking to purchase two truck, two plows for the two new trucks at the Parks Department. This way they can push off parking lots and relieve the DPW from that responsibility.
And the winning bidder is going to be Ortiz Walden?
Yeah, I think they came in two, two to three thousand dollars less than the other. I can't recall the numbers off the top of my head.
The other one, the other guy was fourteen, almost fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
I wanted you to buy the truck and the plow together.
How much, how much is the, the addition?
Eleven thousand and change. I'll, I'll pull up, I'll pull it up now.
On, on top of the other eleven. On top of the previous authorization of ninety-four.
Correct, yeah.
No more snow. This might guarantee no more snow this season.
And be well worth it. It would be well worth it.
Works the guys, yeah. I'll make that, I'll make that bet every day. Okay, so everybody's fine with this going on the regular agenda?
Yes.
Um, if you wouldn't mind, if we could get to the full-time village attorney so we can try and move an RFP forward?
Well, first of all, I don't think we're going to do an RFP because that's not the way to go. We're going to do an advertisement. But, you know, I have things that have been on here for months then. So, you know, let, let's try and get through some of the things that are money-making items. And I, I want to move that forward too, but, you know.
I would just say, if we don't, if we don't get to it tonight, it got moved way down the agenda from last month. So from, from December, it was, it was like H and now it's P. So it should get moved.
Let's try and get through the revenue stuff so we can get some money in here. One A. I, I promise you, if we don't get it to it tonight, they'll get to it in the next meeting. Establishing a fee for review of stormwater pollution and fire inspections. Jerry, you want to talk about that?
Mayor, Dan Sonoff has been working on this, but what we did was we did all the research regarding our surrounding communities and what they charge for these items. And so Dan can give you a quick summary. Just make it quick, Dan, please.
Yeah, I know that. Thank you, Jerry. So as the manager said, we've been, this has been recommended. I think we had a brief conversation about this at a prior work session. We, you know, got numbers from other communities for some fire, fire permits and for stormwater permits. If the board would like, we can prepare a resolution with a recommendation for the next meeting in January.
And let me ask a question, quick question. I, I saw multiple municipalities for the fire, but I only saw something from the town, city of Rye for stormwater. Is there a reason for that?
I thought I had more.
In my packet, that was the only thing that was there.
Town of Amerenik as well.
Yeah, I have Rybrook.
Rybrook.
Rye. If we have Scarsdale. So there, there are a couple that, that are tasked there, but I'll, I can, you know, put together a matrix for the board for the, it should be the twenty-fifth.
Well, do we want to, do we want to think about it now or just decide on the, the amount next time?
Well, what I, what I'd do is see, see it all put together in a recommendation from staff as to a number and why.
We can, we can have that ready for the next meeting.
That'll be on for the next one.
For the regular meeting?
Yeah.
For the work session.
We can put it for the work session and the regular meeting.
Yeah, do, do both and hopefully we get through it. If we don't get through it, then we'll, yeah.
And, and actually, that's a good example of something we, we need to decide. I think, for example, last time, we could have decided this same issue. We need a recommendation. Get to, we need to, need to get to the point of our recommendation, so. That, that's, I think we can't just let the, you know, items linger there, so. Yes, but now just bring us a recommendation and we'll just digest it and, and decide on it.
Okay, item one B, which is on for the regular meeting tonight. It's consolidation of parking permits. Augie, this is your department. You want to explain this?
Uh, yes. Really, in the village of Amerenik, we have several parking permits that basically come due at different times of the year. However, it limits the residents from using different parking lots. We'd like to propose going from several permits to one general parking permit, which would allow residents to use all the parking lots and avoid confusion. Every parking lot you go into, you have these multiple signs of what parking sticker can go there, what can't go there. It creates a lot of confusion. Sally did a really good write-up on this. Sally, do you want to talk about this at all?
Don't be shy, Sally.
Don't be shy. No, I'm here. I'm not shy. Thank you. Yes, as Augie said, we have different lots and you have different stickers for different lots. The reason we need to do this tonight, if we can, is one of our parking lot sticker comes due in March. And that's the one for Regatta Parking. We want to consolidate that into a GP. So it would be one GP sticker, which would be for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And you could use that to park in any of the GP lots that we have now. You could use that to park in the RP lot, which is the lot downstairs from the building. You could use that to park in the CV lot, which is Continental View. So we would be getting rid of Continental View, GPO, N, O, N, and RP. And just have one GP sticker for all of the lots in the village, except for the railroad. Those would stay just railroad and non-resident railroad.
So what you're proposing is one sticker for all except the railroad? And then twenty-four hours, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
But then later on, you're suggesting the, a new lot that would be different. Saying, saying Vito's. And if, I don't understand why we would make something different.
No, the reason why there's, with St. Vito's, I, I didn't want to hold this item up with the St. Vito's because I don't know how the board ultimately wants to move forward with that. And given the time sensitivity of getting the parking decals printed, I think it would be better to, you treat St. Vito's not differently, but, you know, address it after we addressed the main issue. I didn't want to come up the works adding a parking lot and
What I see is you're, you're raising residential fees, one hundred dollars. But the non-residential fees are only raised one hundred dollars. It's the same one hundred dollars. And my question, and you say that would get us closer to what others are doing. So my question is, what is others are doing for the non-residential? Are we still lower? Does anybody have an answer?
Yes. We're still lower.
By how much roughly? Hundred dollars, five hundred dollars?
It differs, Dan. Some municipalities are several hundred dollars more for non-resident parking. And some are just a hundred dollars more. I did a, a spreadsheet of the different municipalities and what they charge. And we can send that to you if you like.
No, I don't need to see it. It, it's a, it's a policy issue for me, for my vantage point. So the question, the question would, would be, the non-residents are basically employees of businesses? Is that what we're accommodating?
We have non-resident railroad permits. And those are for people who do not live in the village. And you can buy, right, you can buy a GP permit if you live or work in the village of Amerenik.
So the non-resident for getting the railroad is basically employees or others?
Others taking the train. There are others taking the train.
That, that's for the railroad park.
That's for the railroad parking.
There's no difference.
Yeah, there, there's no distinction in residency for the GP permit because the only people who can buy that are village residents or people who work in the village of Amerenik.
So can the, can the GP permit park in the railroad or they have to have?
No, it's two, two different permits.
They have to have a railroad parking sticker.
Railroad is keeping kept separate.
That, that I, that I how many non-residential permits that are not railroad permits? Do we, have we issued?
We don't keep track of that, Dan, because if you work in the village of Amerenik, you're allowed to get a permit just like if you live in the village of Amerenik. We don't distinguish.
I, I think what might give clarity here is that there's no monetary distinction to a person who lives in a village getting a GP permit and a person who works in a village getting a GP permit, right? It's the same cost.
That's correct, yes. That's correct.
There's no monetary distinction.
But if you work in the city and you live in Larchmont, Dan, you can't get a GP permit. You can only get a railroad permit, non.
Okay, so the, so the non-residential is only for the railroad permit. Is that what?
Correct.
That's correct.
Then I, then I misread the chart. Then I, then I apologize.
All right. Is, is everybody fine putting this on for the regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes, except for the non-residential, for the non-residential railroad. It seems to me that if we could, if, you know, that maybe we should have a higher fee than what has been suggested, which is only a hundred dollar additional.
No, it's six twenty-five versus a thousand.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. But it was not, it was nine hundred before. The difference, the increase is only a hundred dollars.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and we're still way below others is what I'm hearing.
So, so what do you think the non-residential parking should be for?
I think we should be e- either going up two hundred or three hundred dollars is what my, you know, conceptually. I think it's unfair to just simply say the burden is going to be split evenly between non-residential and residents.
What, what was staff's reasoning for doing that?
Right now, times are hard. And we didn't want to hit everybody with a big, we didn't think the board would accept a larger number. And given the current economical conditions, we didn't want to go up too high at one shot. We wanted to phase this over over three to four years.
And I think some of the municipalities in their non-resident rates, they have structured parking. And there's typically a premium to have structured parking because in inclement weather, when you get back to the village, you don't have to clean up your car. So there, there is, there is some value for, based on different types of parking as well.
Rye has very, only a few, few spots in covered. Larchmont doesn't have any.
There's some of the town of Amerenik.
Well, I, I think there's a supply and demand issue here too. It's not as if we're selling all of our parking spots. We're not. We've got.
In COVID, you're, you're correct, but in non-COVID, did we sell out or not?
Yes, we sell out.
Non-COVID, we need to put a cap on our parking spaces.
So my, my suggestion is we, instead of having a hundred dollar increase for non-residents, we'd have a two hundred dollar increase. That would be my suggestion.
That's the pleasure.
Yeah, but that, that's not, that's not a function of the local law change. That's a, that's a resolution to change the fee.
Okay, well, so we can handle that at another time.
No, Dan, the fees are in the code.
Tonight is what I'm saying.
Yes, the fees are in the code. So you have two things at the regular meeting. You have the law and you have the fees.
Okay, and you can make that motion to amend that at the regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Sally.
Seven oh nine, we're going to break.
Thank you, Sally.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
We're going to break at seven fifteen. The next item on is mine, but I'm going to skip it because that's going to take more than five minutes. Revenue at the cost of council for indemnified party. So I'll skip that. And we'll go to front yard garbage collection. Jerry?
Currently, since the beginning of May, actually sometime in April, in order to deal with the pandemic and give our employees a little protection from the pandemic and to, to, to deal with the entry to properties. We decided to move the sanitation department to front yard collection only. And in doing so, we've been monitoring, obviously, we have still residents that can submit a letter from their doctor for an exemption so that we would still continue to pick up their, their garbage in the side or rear yard. But many, many people have adjusted to the front yard collection. Once we started looking into this and with a couple of conversations I had with neighboring municipalities who are doing the same thing, I realized that there was a potential for savings in our workman's comp liability insurance. And so I had Dan reach out to our And so, um, I had Dan reach out to our broker. And our broker has indicated that, um, our workman's comp liability insurance um, would be reduced somewhere around $30,000 a year in order for us to, um, um, collect garbage just in the front yard. Obviously, people still do it right now on Wednesday, uh, because we don't go to side or rear yards for, for recycling. This would be, you know, um, the continuation of that. So it's not that big of a change. Although, um, we still would have the opportunity for people to get the side and rear yard if they really needed it.
I think this is the way every municipality is gonna be going. I think the town of America has done this. Haven't they, Jerry?
Um, I, I don't know if they've completed the process, but I know that they were heavily involved in the process and moving forward, uh, in that direction.
They've had a couple, a couple of public hearings and they've had some work sessions very much along the same lines, uh, and the same materials that you presented, that it's about 11 municipalities that are still with, uh, backyard. Most of them are, are curb. The only difference I noticed is that they have, they have, they actually, they have a senior exemption. They have, if you're over 17. And they are trying to work in an exception like the one we have. So then kind of my other question is, well, our exemption could cover those senior citizens, but.
Sure.
But, um, the, the other option would be to have those two exceptions. I think it's, they have it as over 17 and, and the medical reasons.
Have to, and people, but people have to ask for it, right? It's just.
Right.
Yeah, they have to.
The other one is just proof of being a senior citizen over 70. So just I throw that because I, I try to compare and that's, 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 otherwise the, the discussion is very much the same. It's workers' comp is, 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 uh, the issue with, um, recycling, the, yeah, the, and I know this, this of course has to go to the public and, and, and we're, we're probably gonna get, it, it also requires, uh, presenting it properly. Uh, so, so we, that, that's the other piece. I think the town has been, has some, materials, kind of some PowerPoint, so it, it's, it's, uh, that's, that the communication piece of it is, is gonna be really important to justify this.
Do you want to do kind of a public presentation in February?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. So we'd say to folks, hey, listen, this is what we're doing. This is what they're thinking of doing. If, if, you know, if it doesn't turn out well, this is what Jerry wanted to do.
Yeah. But, but, but it's, it's, it's also important that we talk about it at the work session because I wasn't even thinking of the 70-plus exemption. We could include that and, and.
Yeah.
Of course.
I, I, that, that's why I bring it up because I think that will, uh, in a way, sound, uh, sensitive and, and, and if we're in power with, with our neighbors, it makes sense. Actually, they, they, as I say, they're thinking about, uh, uh, our exemption and they were actually discussing where, they, they didn't look at us as we, and we already have the formula.
Yeah.
So I, I think I like that a lot. Some people would be grateful that that's there.
All right, so let's, let's, uh, go for the first of February.
I actually, I like it. I think it's great.
I do, too.
Thank you, Jerry.
I said.
Thank you, everyone.
All the way down the whole building to the back. I want something for apartment dwellers when they're gonna come empty my building. Uh, all right, it's, it's 7:14. Let, let, let's take a break and come back, uh, for, for real show at 7:30. Uh, need a motion to close this meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Augie?
Thank you, Tom.
I would hope all the people, I would. All of you know that.
Everybody here? Ask Cliff for a roll.
Cliff, are you recording?
Yep, everything is live.
Everything's live.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the 7:30 PM work session, not work session, regular meeting of the Village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees for January 11th, 2021. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi.
Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States. Which stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. Divisible. Liberty. Justice. For all.
Very much. And your motion to open this meeting.
It's all moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm gonna call an audible from the line here tonight, and we're gonna add a presentation because the county executive, George Vladimir, has some hopefully good news to impart upon the community about vaccinations. So, George, thank you for coming down tonight, virtually. It looks like you're on a beach there behind us, that looks nice.
My beach.
We're thinking of good days ahead. Warm days. Well, I appreciate the indulgence of the board. Today was a very busy day, and I thought I would come in and give you a quick update of where we are with vaccines. I know you've got important business, so I promise I won't take a long time, but it's important to try to get the message out as best as we can. As we all know, New York State has driven the train on everything related to COVID. The creation of color zones, the opening and closing of businesses, the testing and the reporting of data. So, the decisions that are made in Albany generally by the governor and the people around him are really what I'm reporting on this evening, but primarily because we have moved from Phase 1A, in which the number of people that were eligible for testing, pardon me, for vaccines was a relatively limited number, and now it's broadened in a couple different ways, so I thought I'd run through that with you very quickly. You're gonna get questions, all of us as elected officials will, and there's a lot of things that are not answerable at this stage of the game, but I just wanted to give you a couple of things. So first of all, today began Phase 1B of people who are eligible, and those that are eligible now are much broader. All first responders, police, fire, members, employees are now eligible to sign up for the test. Previously, only EMS individuals in 1A were allowable. Teachers and education workers are eligible. Individuals who represent safety workers in the public, and I think each community's gonna have to determine what public safety workers would be over and above police. In our level of government, we would include correction workers in that category, public safety. I think the village would look at it, consult with some of our contacts in the state, like Brian Hatt, to determine what it is. The biggest expansion is people who are 75 years of age and older are now eligible to call up for an appointment. This is a much larger cohort of people for vaccination than have been allowed up to this point, and as you can imagine, people of a certain age have been waiting, they've been very anxious about it, and the process is that there is no walk-up vaccination anywhere. You must go through the New York State COVID form, and in so doing, register, and then the information within the screen will allow you to set up an appointment. Now, for many of our friends who are a bit older, I'm not quite 75, so those who are older than that, all the way up the line, may find it difficult to go online, they may not have the skills or the access to going online, so we're encouraging everybody to reach out to a child or a neighbor or friend who has the computer skills necessary for you to be able to do this. There is a website, I'm gonna send this information, I guess, to Jerry so that he can circulate it to the board, and each of you can have it, because in your comings and goings, people will come up to you and ask you these questions, and you want to at least have a modicum of knowledge about it. But there is an online location, forms.ny.gov and backslash S3 backslash vaccine, that will give you a form that must be completed in order to sign up for an appointment, and you have to go on there and show the geography that you're in so that the right place will be addressed to you. There's also a telephone number, 1-833-697-4829, which is a hotline for information, and as you can imagine, hotlines get filled up pretty quickly. People call them, and they have unique problems, and it takes time to solve any one case while the other calls are queuing up behind it. But 1-833-697-4829 has also been set up by the state. So going into the website to get the form to fill out, to ask for, to get an appointment, and then having a hotline number to call is very critical in all of this. The next phase of individuals, which we're not adding, we have been given no target by the state, will involve seniors between the ages of 65 and 75. It will also include those people that have certain types of diseases that are considered potential comorbidity, diabetes and things of that nature. We don't know when we're gonna go into 1C, but obviously we'll keep you posted on it. One particular thing that we're going to reach out to do is to the various people who run senior programs, even though most of those programs are not operative right now, but the VFW that has a nutrition program, a food program, they have the greatest source and contact with seniors, and we're gonna try to get some of this information to them so they can share with seniors. Seniors can go online with whatever assistance they can get and then sign up for the appointments. I should point out, while I focused on seniors, quite a lot of medical professionals are now eligible, not only doctors and nurses, but dentists, orthodontists, psychiatrists and psychologists, physical therapists, optometrists, pharmacists, home care workers, hospice workers are all now eligible for signing up for a vaccine. And I do wanna highlight what we all know is that these vaccines, whether it's the FISA or the Moderna vaccine, require two separate treatments, or two separate shots, one that happens right away and one that follows by three to four weeks, depending on which version of the vaccine you receive. So, in providing some of this information in writing, again, to Jerry and Dan, who will get it out to the rest of you, you'll see it, and your executive, the folks throughout the departments will see it, but this is a volatile situation, things change. The governor and the state will change some of the rules as we go along, so we're gonna have to try to be as flexible as possible. People will come back with recommendations for things. By all means, you can channel them, you know, through us or through your state legislators, but at the end of the day, it is the governor that's gonna make these decisions, as he has up to now. So I wanted to make sure I highlighted that, because, you know, it seems to be the talk of the local government moment, and if it's appropriate to take a couple of questions, I'm happy to do it. I'm very mindful that you, you know, circumvented your normal schedule to allow me to do this, which I appreciate, and I wanna be respectful of your time, but if there are any questions as to where we're at at the moment, I'm happy to try to answer them.
George, I just wanna say thank you very much for all you're doing and all the help. You're on county site, you're county convention site, county center site. Got filled up through February in less than an hour.
Amazing.
I've been told the people on the phone there, as well as the Westchester Department of Health for over an hour, and when they get through, it then goes to, you call can't be completed. So those are technical things which are not in your control, you know, but things I'm sure that you guys need to be aware of and probably are, and are working on it, but we definitely appreciate it. But for the public to know, there are many sites that are on the New York State approved list that are not approved yet, i.e. they're not operative. Like Rye Pharmacy in Rye is approved, but they have not gotten any shipments, and they don't know when, nobody's told them when they will expect anything, yet they're, and they can't accept applications or appointments until they're operative, and the same for three other sites in Westchester.
Dan, you're accurate in all of those points. We are getting the Westchester County Center together, are opening on Wednesday for vaccination purposes, and the size of that location will make it a bit of a mecca. We think that if we get to maximum capacity, we can inoculate 1,000 people a day. We're still using the hospital rooms that were created, intending to be for hospital purposes, but now become separate areas for distribution of the vaccine. We're gonna have, we have a walkthrough schedule for tomorrow morning, that should be the final sign-off with the state, opens on Wednesday, and as you pointed out accurately, we're booking up fast, but what you also pointed out is that when the local pharmacies are operative and they get their shipments of the vaccine, then individuals will not have to figure, well, I have to go to White Plains to get it, there'll be options that will be more localized in Mamaronek. Now, when those things happen, you can bet that they're gonna create traffic jams and physical logistics, you know, so all of those things will come back to your doorstep as they come back to our doorstep to figure out what to do. But, you know, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but at least we're on the process of dealing with it.
I wanna thank you for being so proactive and having your staff being so proactive. It is just delightful and much, much better than a lot of other areas that are talking and not doing.
Well, thank you, Dan, I appreciate it.
Right. Thank you, George. Hopefully we'll have something to put soon on the website so we can get it out to all of our residents.
Very good, thanks very much, Mr. Mayor, to the members of the board, friends all. I appreciate your time and your interruption, and stay safe, and we'll try to do our end of the bargain, and we'll get through this. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
The next item on the agenda is recognition of outgoing boards and committee members. I see some of you are in the audience here. Sometimes folks get term limited out of boards and committees, sometimes folks have to leave for other reasons, sometimes folks don't get reappointed, but that doesn't mean that we don't honor and appreciate all the work that is done by all of our volunteers throughout the years. This is a very, very volunteer-oriented community. We really appreciate and depend upon our volunteers to get stuff done. So I'm gonna read off the list of the volunteers being honored tonight, and they will get recognition in the form of a certificate in the mail. Sarah Evans, from the Marine Education Advisory Committee. Jim Desmond, from the Marine Education Advisory Committee. Mark Ettinger, from the Board of Ethics. Debbie Chapman, from the Board of Ethics. Larry Farkas, from the Board of Traffic Commissioners. John Fall, from the Budget Committee. Martin Hain, in the Committee for the Environment. Mr. David Finch, ex-trustee from the Committee for the Environment. Shari Allison, in the Arts Council. Jamie Lynn Weisenger, in the Arts Council. Mr. Doug Dunaway, Dunaway, from the ZBA. Ms. Doreen Rooney, from the HCZMC. Mr. Tony Gelber, from the HCZMC. David Neufeld, from the HCZMC, who is now going to be serving on the zoning board. Mr. Lou Mendez, from the Planning Board. Kathleen Gallagher, from the Parks, Recreation and Parks. Emily Marshall, from the Recreation and Parks. Mr. Robert Stark, from the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee. And Narice Durina, from the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee. I wanna thank them all for their service and their participation, and I believe Mr. Dunaway would like to say something. His hand is up, will you?
Doug? Doug, unmute yourself.
Hello? How's that?
You got it.
I really would like to thank the Board of Trustees for recognizing the volunteers of this village. We do it on our own private time, and I really appreciate the recognition. I'd like to say that Dave Neufeld, outstanding individual, I've known him for a long time, he'll be an absolute asset to the ZBA, along with Robin and Abigail. They are also outstanding individuals that I really do respect and honor, and I'm glad Dave was appointed. Dave, Dave and I have gone back to previous zoning boards, and I learned a lot from Dave, and I know that he will be an absolute asset to that zoning board. And again, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for recognizing me and the other volunteers of this village, and I wish all of the new appointed members a lot of luck in their new endeavor. Thank you very much.
Doug, thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the village over the many, many years, I appreciate it. The next up is Ms. Rooney.
Doreen, unmute yourself.
How's that, better?
Perfect.
Okay. I thank you very much for recognizing our service to the village. I just heard that several members are off the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission, and I hope there's other people out there that has a care and concern for our entire village, and I hope that the Board of Trustees will move that commission forward and create some leadership to find individuals that are going to serve on this very important committee that is, or commission, that ties in with the Department of State. And good luck to all of you, and I hope there is someone out there, two people it sounds like, that will step up. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Doreen.
Thank you, Doreen. David?
David, unmute yourself.
There we go, I'm sorry. I just wanna thank you very much, I enjoyed serving with the Harbor Coastal Zone and Doreen, and also just wanna thank you very much, I enjoyed it, and thank you for the opportunity to go back to zoning, and Doug will miss being up late at night occasionally, because I was on, the first time I was on the zoning board, the first meeting is when I met Doug, and that was well over 25 years ago, so thank you all so much.
Thank you, David, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go, the next item on our agenda is a presentation by the village auditor, O'Connor Davies. And who's gonna start off? Mr. Coughlin, is it gonna be you?
Yes, it is.
Oh, Mr. Coughlin, thank you.
How are you? I'd like to thank the board and yourself for allowing us to, you know, present the findings of the audit for the year ended May of '20. With me tonight is Colleen Harris, she was the supervisor on site. When we get to the actual numbers, she'll do a lot of the presentation herself. Would you like me to share the presentation online, or do you have copies?
Why don't you share it online so that the people watching can? Thank you.
Did it, did it show up?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna go through a few items, first, an overview and the required communications with the board. We'll talk about the actual audit results. Colleen will take you through some of the revenues and the expenses, and we put a five-year history in of those revenues for you. Then we'll look at your fund balance for five years, and then also the village does operate some other funds, so we'll give a quick overview of those items. So to begin with, is your responsibility as a board, you have to select and implement appropriate accounting policies for a municipality your size. Everybody's a little different, depending on the complexity. You need to present your financial statements according with US GAAP, Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. You need to establish and maintain effective internal controls, and you need to be in compliance with all laws, regulations and provisions of contracts and agreements that you've entered into. During the course of the audit, you need to provide us all the financial records and related information to the auditors, and again, set the proper tone at the top, and we see that through the board minutes, the public speaking at the boards, your accessibility, the fact that you post everything. And we see that through the board minutes, the public speaking at the boards, your accessibility, the fact that you post everything online. So, you know, the board is doing everything they can to be as transparent as possible. Being that we're on this subject right now, I'd like to stop and just take a minute and thank the board for the conditions that we had to work in this year during COVID. Augie, his team Laura and Jonathan did a great job trying to provide us the information we needed, given that everything was remote with limited access. I know it was a strain on your staff and your people, and I just want to let you know they did a great job in providing us the data that we needed to complete the audit. A little unusual circumstances here, but again, we do appreciate the effort that they put in.
Thank you. They are a great crew.
They are. And our responsibilities, most important is the deliverables. That's our independent auditor's report. The required communications to those charged with government, that's you. We produce a management letter, some recommendations for the board. We need to communicate any fraud or illegal acts that are noted during the audit. And we're pleased to say that none were brought to our attention through our, our individual interviews with individuals, with employees, and we didn't find any during our testing of transactions. We didn't encounter any difficulty during the conduct of the audit, other than the aforementioned remoteness of the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements. What that means is that there were no journal entries that we proposed that the village didn't want to record. And we had no disagreements with management. So to our opinion, we'll skip over all the big, where the, all the words here. Most importantly is we issued an unmodified opinion for the village. It's also known as a clean opinion. And it's the highest level of assurance a auditing firm can provide a client. So I assume the village expects no less during the conduct of the audit. So here we have a quick overview of the, and I'll make it a little bigger. So regarding your general fund, which is the main operating fund of the village. These are your revenues and expenses. The original, the first column is your original budget. That's the budget that the board adopted back when it went through its budget process. Then the second column is your final budget after any modifications throughout the year. Then your actual results, then your variance with that budget. If we start with the third number up from the bottom, you can see that when you originally adopted your budget, if every revenue and every expense had come in on, right on budget, you would have utilized $1,360,000 of your fund balance. In other words, you would have had an operating loss that was planned for. That was made up of two components. One, you had $760,000 worth of encumbrances. Those are purchase orders that are ordered and processed near the end of the year. And they didn't come in in time to be recorded. And then also during the course of the year, during the budget process, you appropriated $600,000 of your unassigned surplus in order to mitigate the tax impact on your residents. So you use 600,000 of your accumulated fund balance in order to not raise taxes higher than you thought necessary. The final budget, if you notice, that number did change to 1,862. During the course of the year, you did modify that budget through some board resolutions. The most significant one was $260,000 for COVID-related items. You also had a budget modification for telephone services for about 67,000. Some repairs on parks equipment. A retention program agreement and you had some mosquito control. So you had a variety of reasons, but you did modify it by approximately $500,000. How did we do? Not only did you not utilize any of that surplus that you planned, you actually had a surplus of 856,000. So in effect, you did 2.7 million better than you anticipated. How did we do that? If you look at that first row, you see revenues. Revenues did come in under budget by about 450,000. Not really unexpected, given what you went through as a municipality. And your expenditures came in about 3.2 million under budget, creating that positive budget variance of 2.7 million. I'll turn it over to Colleen and what she'll do is take you through some of the revenues that generated and the expenses that generated that surplus.
Thank you, Chris. The first slide I'll go through, as Chris mentioned, is some of your major revenues. As you know, you have around 50 to 100 revenue accounts. But what we did below is select just a few of the major categories, the ones that had the biggest, biggest impact on the fiscal results. The first being property tax, which is two thirds of the total revenue. And as always, it's mostly all collected. The next line we will talk about is your sales tax. And what may surprise you is that the village came in over, even though the adopted budget was, you know, three, 3 million. And, and that's really because there was a sales tax percentage increase around August, in August of 2019.
If you remember, the county increased its sales tax rate by 1% in August. So I think the new, the good news for the village is that, number one, you didn't anticipate that when you prepared your budget. And number two, thank goodness, because with COVID affecting everything shut down from March, April and May. I believe roughly the county came in about 30% less than the previous year on their sales tax collection. So the fact that you came in over budget really helped you meet your budgetary obligations.
That's right. And then for the next parking fees, as a courtesy to the village residents, the meter fees were waived during the months of March through May. So that's why you're seeing the savings of $149,000. The next day camp fees, as we're all aware, a lot of the parks and rec programs were canceled over the summer due to the restrictions implemented by the state. And you'll also see a corresponding savings in the parks and rec department related to this. With the permit fee savings and the restrictions put on permit fees due to the state limits place, state limitations placed on construction, you also had a savings.
No savings, a shortfall.
A shortfall. For fines and forfeited bail. The shortfall is related to the court closures during the months of the pandemic. And then similarly with mortgage tax, you came in 35 under the anticipated budget because closings weren't able to take place. Luckily now they're revving back up as, you know, people are moving out of the city. I think that's, that's the last one on there.
Yeah, mortgage tax is the only one that is a, not a permanent loss. Because I think you saw, you've seen since that period of time, your mortgage tax revenue is probably back to where it normally is. Especially given the, the feeling that a lot of people might want to leave New York City and move up to the suburbs again after being kind of cooped up in their apartments. Like the real estate activity in Westchester is really booming.
Correct. Chris, do you want to move to the five-year major revenues? This really is here for your information. We put it here to give you a perspective of those major revenues I discussed over the course of five years.
There was no real significant trends when Colleen put this together. I think, you know, for you, most importantly, you look at your property tax line and you can see over the course of five years that you've really done a good job of maintaining minimal tax increases. And your property, your sales tax. When I first started presenting to boards, you know, I was recovering from the recession. You're barely back to the prior year's levels. Now you can see your, the sales tax kind of growing at the pace that it used to be up until this year, unfortunately.
Chris, can you move to the, there you go. The next slide is your major expenditures that we have listed, which is the major expenditures, expenditures in general are even more difficult to capture because your budget contains many various departments and lines. So again, we tried to capture the biggest ones below. The first is the police. And the variance you see there between the actual numbers and the budget is due to a vacant position in the police department. And in addition, there were also some patrol cars that were budgeted for in 2020 that didn't end up. Those purchases didn't happen until 2021. For the transportation variance that you're seeing, there was unspent chips money. And there was also some savings in seasonal labor and overtime. These parks and recreations program variance that you're seeing here, as I mentioned before, in the, in the revenue section, yeah, there's some expenses that were incurred to the tune of 112,000. Moving along to the bottom of the list, you'll see that there was some savings, some, some money in FICA and social security, primarily due to some vacancies and overtime that wasn't spent. And then finally, towards the end, on the bottom of this list, you have your hospital, medical and dental insurance. Those rates that came in in January were actually slightly lower than anticipated.
So you can see that overall in those, you know, about 10 areas that we highlighted that you saved almost $2 million when compared to budget. I mean, as I said, this is a very unique year. Most years you would have spent most of that money because your programs are running full speed ahead and, you know, you're taking care of the residents. But with everybody kind of sequestered, you did incur some savings and a lot of salaries and overtime beginning around March. And that generated the savings on the workers' comp benefits, social security, areas like that. So there was a ripple effect based on the salaries through the fringe benefit categories. And a lot of those are in that other expense line. Like we said, we tried to capture the major ones so that, you know, but you have so many lines in your budget to pick them all out. It'd be a little difficult. And again, Colleen put a five-year trend together for you, just to show you, you know, maybe just for budgetary purposes, it gives you an idea of where your expenses are trending. You can see on your police line, you know, again, one of your biggest lines. Really done a good job of maintaining a very steady expense line. You know, some communities see this rise by double digits during the course of the year. You're up 7.4 million to 7.7 over four years. So that's only a $300,000 increase. You're talking 5% over five years, 1% a year on average. So you've done a good job of maintaining that cost. The big one we used to talk about for years was the state retirement system. Again, after the crash of the stock market and the long recession that we went through, the state retirement system was going up double digits every year. And now you can see it's actually declining a little bit, not only the rates, but also again, based on your savings of the salaries that you had. So again, it's just in there for informational purposes, you know, so you can see some of your own trend analysis. The most important area that you have are, is your fund balance. And this is a snapshot of your fund balance. Let me make it a little smaller. And you can see that back in 2016, your total fund balance was about 10.7 million. And over the last few years, you've grown it up to about 14.27 million. So you've, again, you've done a good job. You've utilized the fund balance to maintain a, you know, a reduction in your taxes. But at the same time, you've created a rainy day fund, which basically during the last part of 2000 and first part of 2020 and the latter part of the new year, the, you've seen it because of COVID that you needed this rainy day fund. I mean, you had to dip into it for $260,000 just to, you know, purchase supply, necessary supplies and to cover expenses. If you didn't have this reserve there, you might have not been able to address your needs as fast as, as you did. So if we look at 2020, you can see that the first category you use is restricted fund balance. So you have $9,962 restricted for law enforcement. Under committed, the board has put away 335,000 for capital projects. So in order to maybe address some capital needs without having to issue bonds, you have 335,000 put away. In the assigned category, the first is purchases on order, also known as encumbrances. As I said, those are purchase orders processed near the end of the year where they didn't come in on time. So your fund balance is segregated to pay that prior year expense. There's 629 and 600,000 was used to balance the next year's budget. So your unassigned fund balance is about 12.69 million. And that's roughly 33% of your ensuing year's budget. And your overall fund balance is about 38%. So you have a very good fund balance for a village. A lot of people will ask me, what is an adequate fund balance? And the answer is it depends on the village's needs. As I always say, the municipalities in lower Westchester, again, in my opinion, always need a little more fund balance because you have older infrastructure. And we all know that when a water main breaks or sewer main line leaks, the expense of opening it up can run easily into six figures. And by having these reserves put away and being prudent, you have money to address those needs. As I said at the beginning, you do operate some other funds. So you have a water fund that has a ending fund balance of about 2.4 million. This year you basically broke even, a minor $1,000 loss. Your capital fund, though, is in a deficit position of 10,305,000. I assume that what you're doing is you're waiting to issue some debt to cover some of the projects. In the meantime, you have advanced the money from the, the water fund or the general fund to cover the cost of those projects. Just want to point out with interest rates very low, you might want to try to take advantage of those rates and maybe look into addressing some of these capital projects and issue some bonds to cover them. Again, that's purely management's decision. But, you know, rates are low and you have to always be on top of these projects to make sure that the proper advances have been recorded. Your sewer fund has 335,000. You can see that it had a minor surplus this year. And then your special purpose fund, basically, which is restricted, has a million one fund balance in it. And your debt service has about 4 million. That debt service money is restricted to pay the debt that was issued. That's either premiums or closed capital projects. So when you're doing your budget, you should look at that fund balance. And you might be able to utilize some of it again to keep your taxes at a reasonable level by paying down the debt that generated that surplus. That's the only way you can use that money. So you want to look at your schedule and see what's available for use. And basically that, that's it. That's a quick synopsis of what happened last year. Again, I really appreciate all the effort that was put in by the manager and the treasurer's office to accommodate us. I know it was a difficult time for everybody and people looking over your shoulder wasn't very pleasurable. But as always, you know, your team is extremely professional and really addressed all of our needs and concerns as we went along. So I do appreciate that. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Right, the board? Could you stop sharing the screen in future?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, no problem.
Quick request. First of all, thank you, Colleen and Chris. A very clear explanation. It's, it's good to see you in person every year, but I think you've really been, you know, very, very clear. And, and I just want to ask you, please send us just those slides. Because we do have the paper copy of the financials and they're on our website. That five-year comparison is very helpful. We used it through, in the budget season. And it's going to be very relevant this, this year. So please send Augie that, that presentation so he can forward it to us and make it available on, on the website.
I believe Colleen sent it over this morning.
I have it already. I'll put it on the website.
Okay.
Victor, I have a copy already and I'll put it on the website.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Augie. Right, I have that, no real questions because you've, you've answered and even anticipated some, some, some issues. And of course, next year is going to be different, but as you said, our fund balance has helped us. We've, we've already used a million three plus the 600. So that, that's what it was there for and it can also, on, on the, on the, on the financing on those six figures on, on, on sewer infrastructure, we, we were on it. So you anticipated actually my question. So thank you.
Thank you.
A member of the Budget Committee with his hand up? Mr. Tippett?
There he is.
Glad, unmute yourself. Go ahead, Glenn.
Yes. Good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. I did see the online copy that's available to the public. I think it says click here at the, at the end of where the presentation line is so you can download it to your computer. I had actually emailed the rest of the Budget Committee that it was available to look at it. Just a quick question. I believe at this point in time, we have approximately $42, $43 million in bonds already on the village. on the village. Is that true?
Uh, let me check. About 42.2 million. Very good.
Okay. And our limit would be 83 million according to state statute based on the, uh, value of our real estate.
A constitutional, a constitutional tax.
My question is, we have, um, by, uh, state mandate, federal mandate, a large, uh, liability coming up that will probably have to be bonded under our water fund. Is that obligation counted, uh, against the village bond fund? Or would that be considered separate because the water bills are paid for separate? In other words, if we had to, uh, bond $20 million for a water filtration plant, would that $20 million be, uh, added to the 42 million, meaning we had $62 million worth of Bob obligations? Or would those Bob obligations be considered separate because it's directly connected to our water use?
Before they answer that question, uh, Augie wanted to correct something. Augie, say that again.
Our, our debt limit is not 86,000, uh,
Eighty-three million. I'm sorry.
Eighty-three million. Our constitutional tax limit is somewhere in the ballpark of 255 million.
Now with, with that clarification, uh, to answer Mr. Tippett's question, if we had to, uh, bond 20 million for a filtration plant, because I don't think that's the clause, uh, would that go against our debt limit because it's a separate fund for water plant?
It would go against our debt limit, that if for the water filtration plant. I'm sorry. The water filtration plant, it's in the ballpark of 90 million. That's we breaking up 50% of town of Mamaronek, roughly 25 Harrison, 25 the village. Correct.
I think what Glenn is asking, uh, Chris, is if we hit bond 25 million, does that come under, uh, the maximum that, you know, reduce the maximum amount that we can borrow?
I think Augie just attempted to answer that and there are certain exemptions for water and sewer. I would check with your legal counsel to see if this is an exemption. But the, uh, $20 million to use that number would be added to the 42 and show up on the village's books as debt of the village. But there is exemptions in the law for, um, certain types of debt that can be exempted from your limit. So your legal counsel should answer that question.
Just to clarify, that debt would be recouped from the water charges from that tax. Okay. Thank you, Glenn.
So, so Chris, like, I'm sorry, Glenn, are you done?
Yes.
Chris, I have a couple of questions. Uh, you indicated that we have, uh, a large debt capacity, uh, and that we should consider borrowing. Did I understand you correctly that we should consider borrowing now for different expenditures that are anticipated?
No. What, what I, number one, I didn't indicate anything about your debt capacity. That's not in our report. That was brought up by the gentleman that asked the question.
Okay.
Um, all I said was that currently your capital project fund has been advanced money from the general and water fund to the tune of about $10 million. And that, that money eventually is going to have to be borrowed anyway to pay back your general fund and your water fund or sewer fund, um, wherever it came from. And with interest rates so low, I just think it's something that you should talk to your fiscal advisor about and see if it's the right time to enter the market.
So in all of the work that you've done over the years and particularly this year, what other recommendations would you have that we, where we could do things better and we could? Well, let's stop there.
Well, I mean, to, to be perfectly honest, you know, the village does a very good job with its records. I mean, I'll start with that. You know, we come in as the auditors and, you know, we, we really are testing transactions more so than, uh, doing an analysis of where you could save money. That's not the purpose of an audit. But I mean, I, I think that your, the finance office, treasurer's office, um, is using automation as much as it can. It's, it stages it in and they're doing a good job of, uh, moving forward. I think the areas that we all look at from our point of view is, uh, shared services with other municipalities. Um, you know, we're all very close knit and, um, for example, where I came from, uh, we had a sewer system. We're a small town. And instead of us buying our own cameras to scope the pipes, we were able to make arrangements to lease this equipment from the other municipalities that could afford it. And I, and I think you do that already. I think you look into these options of sharing. You, you know, there's no secret here. I mean, you guys, you, you came in almost 3 million under budget. It's hard for me to give many suggestions when you come in 3 million under budget on your expenditures in the time of COVID.
No, I understand that. And, uh, I think Augie does an exemplary job and his staff, uh, do not misunderstand me. But no matter how good we, any of us are, there are always things that we can improve on. And my question is, are there things?
I, I, I think the area that we see in most for all municipalities is in the area of the deposits. In other words, you know, people give road opening deposits, bid deposits, project deposits. And a lot of times they don't reclaim those monies and they start to add up in your trust and agency fund. We would like to see those things reviewed because a lot of times that money can come back to the village um, as revenue, if the people aren't going to claim it after a certain period of time. You know, I don't think it's a real issue with the village of Mamaronek, but that's always an area that we see where, you know, it's, uh, small ticket items that add up to a lot. So we always like to see a little more work done on the deposits that are held by municipalities. Uh, I have one where we did the audit. They almost had $2 million in these deposits that they could pull in. So I mean, that, that's significant amount of money that the village was able to, uh, generate from these old deposits that people forfeited. So I, I think that when you look at your, your, um, in your court system, you know, you have parking tickets. I think you have your, um, your deposits that you're taking on bids and capital projects and items like that. That's probably the area you should look at the most. Everything else is fairly automated.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Colleen. Uh, thank you to Quirk Treasurer staff for doing a great job and to the budget officer, Mr. Barbario. And I just want to point out that, uh, the village attorney has told me that water debt is not, uh, what did he say? One, 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 misquote him. Debt issued for water supply and distribution is exempt from constitutional debt limits. So just to clarify that.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Again, thank you very much. And if you ever have questions, please feel free to reach out. I'd be more than happy to attend any meeting that you have questions.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you very much.
Great. Okay. Now we're going to get to communication to avoid round one. Does anybody have any burning desire?
One hand.
In this area. Let's go to Daria first because Glenn said it by the apple. Five minutes? Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Ari.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me? That was a mixed, a mixed react.
Yes, yes.
Great.
Yes.
Hello, everyone. Um, I know it's a little late, but I wanted to wish you all Happy New Year. Um, because this is our, the first meeting since. Um, and I wanted to ask you about the ABC properties lawsuit. Um, because concerned citizens have now asked over several meetings, what the ABC properties lawsuit is that has cost us taxpayers over $100,000 for someone to build three houses. So I have questions. Excuse me. Um, the first is why can't you tell us exactly what this lawsuit is? And the second is have you tried to negotiate with the other side?
You have another statement? I, I, I believe I've tried to answer these questions before, but you know, if you have another statement about this.
If I have another statement?
Not going to discuss ongoing litigation like that.
Okay. Well then, those were my questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Glenn.
Glenn, unmute yourself.
Good evening. Happy New Year to each and every one of us. I hope you remember me because it's been a while. Um, to touch on the point, the reason I was asking about the, um, limit on our, uh, bond borrowing is, it's a pretty comprehensive report. We've got about $43 million right now, which doesn't include what was already encumbered, which was about 10, 10 million. That would, if you actually bonded that, that would put you around 52 million. Our limit is 83 million. It will go up because it's, uh, based on a percentage of the overall property value here in the village of Mamaronek. This year, let me finish. This year we've already put out to bid, uh, 5 million in sewer, which we are getting a million back. And we still have the liability over the next five years of the water, which is approximately 27 million minus whatever grants and everything else we get. So I think it would behoove our, uh, our legal staff to see exactly which bonds might not fall under that cap because without that, within five years, you're going to be at the $80 million cap.
All right. Glenn, I, I, I just got to interrupt you there for a point of, uh, fact. Uh, Augie talked about this. Maybe you didn't hear him. Uh, our debt limit is not 80 million. It's 255 million. And the, uh, the, the attorney has also said that debt issued for water supply and distribution is exempt from constitutional debt limit. But I, I just want to, you know, I, I, I don't want to stifle you, but I just want to get us all on the same factual page.
Okay. I just wanted to make, make sure that. The other one is that, um, your legal this year, you have about approximately 120, 130,000 dollars left. But you owe $100,000 worth of salaries up until, uh, June 1st. So you might want to look at taking some of the money you have tucked away from the planning board for the, uh, you got about $200,000. I would assume that's for the Hampshire lawsuit. And you might have to move it to legal. Uh, the other one is you have a removal for snow removal for overtime for relief. Uh, I understand it's probably because it's the same workers, but you're probably better off taking it out of the traffic bureau because, uh, their budget, uh, expenditures aren't going to be there because they're based on, uh, a percentage of parking tickets and we haven't done the parking tickets. So they got $70,000 and they probably spent about 5,000 of it. You got at least $30,000 there. I wouldn't be taking money out of the snow removal budget on January 11th. Let's see how the snow, uh, winds up going to January 10th. At that point, I wish you well because I'm going to watch the championship football game. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kevin Chong.
Kevin, unmute yourself.
Hi there. Good afternoon or good evening rather. Thank you, uh, for taking me again. Uh, my question is about, I actually still have questions about the Article 78 lawsuit by Cindy Goldstein. Uh, what I want to know is if the village will be reimbursed by her attorney? Because it seems to me that we've paid for him to effectively sue us. And my, the follow-up question is why would we pay for someone to sue us? That's what I'd like to know tonight.
Okay. I, I, I want to, I just, and Augie will help me with this. We have not paid any bills for the Article 78. Augustino.
Sir, I investigated your allegation at the prior meeting and the review of the bill showed that nothing was paid for the plaintiff's attorney.
For the Article 78?
Article 78.
Oh, if nothing was paid, then why is there here on the vendor activity report? Why does it say that we paid a professional services rendered Village of Mamaronek Ethics Matter for the amount of $33,400? That is check number 115935, voucher number 55596756. And that's only one, that's only one payment.
Sir.
Amount of payments for $143,733.43.
Right.
That, that's what I want to know.
Those, those charges are not for the Article 78 as you originally said. Those charges were for the hearing in front of the ethics board. Uh, that is a situation that is mandated under our code. Uh, it's something that I, I, I'm going to try to address in the future how we handle that. But that is, uh, about the ethics hearing and not about the Article 78.
So you're essentially telling me we did not pay for someone to sue us?
That is correct. That is correct.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Roney.
Torino, mute yourself.
Tori, you're muted. You look to be unmuted now.
I'm using a phone now. Sorry, guys.
Okay, go ahead.
Two things. Um, one of them is, is, um, I'm off the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission, but as a commissioner and now I'm, that I'm off, I've noticed that a lot of things are falling through the cracks where, um, maybe they should go to the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission. I have a question. In your December meeting, I can't remember which it was. There were only two. There was something dealing with the property at the beginning of the harbor. And it seems as if the people of the state of New York, um, sort of took that property. And it seems to be going to be utilized for, um, some type of work on the US One Bridge. Uh, am I correct in understanding that?
Basically, yes.
Was there an agreement made with the village and the DOT, um, to utilize that property?
Yes. Yeah, there were.
It's a temporary construction easement.
Right. So, so there was an agreement made with the village board ease to be utilized? Excuse me? Hello?
Yes.
And did that go through the seeker and, uh, consistency process yet? There's a reason why I bring it up. The department, DOT is a state agency. They have not at this point in time gone for a Department of State consistency concurrence, nor have they been in front of the Harbor and Coastal Zone Management Commission. On page 99 of our LWRP, it's explicit that the Board of Trustees is the lead agency to make sure LWRP is implemented. And from what I've learned over six years and previous to that, um, if you look at policy one of our LWRP, it explicitly talks about that property. And it's only to be utilized for water dependent use as well as it's the only area in the village for revitalization. So I don't know what's going to happen when the DOT goes for consistency concurrence with the Department of State, which they will have to. But at this point, I'm going to recommend, as I've been on the commission for six years and worked with the Department of State to understand things previous to that, that you notify the DOT that it's not consistent with our policy one of our LWRP and try to figure out what you can do to, um, undo what has been done.
Uh, Mr. Sonov, did you want to talk to us?
Yeah. So the item that the board considered, uh, I think it was in November, December last year, was the, uh, the amount to be paid to the village for the temporary easements that they require for the project. I think it was between the two, it was something about $55,000. There's easement on both sides of the bridge for temporary work areas. Uh, I know that, uh, you know, we did send a letter to the DOT in October, November last year, uh, asking the process about when they were going to come back to the village, specifically the HZM. specifically the HCZM, to talk about the project. I think any consistency that's been done to this point has dealt with the use of federal money for the project. There were some similar requests that I forward to the HCZM for CDBG projects that were considered in December last year. But as far as what was agreed to by the village was the amount of money to be, the value of the easements that will be needed as part of the project.
Are you there?
So is this, is this an easement for the actual bridge? Or is it a temporary work easement for them to stage things?
It's a temporary work easement. It's not a permanent easement. The state doesn't really do easements for their bridges. They'll, they'll just acquire property. So it's just, it's a temporary work easement.
So this is an acquisition of property that they will hold forever?
No.
No, it's a temporary work easement. The word temporary is important. Temporary. Not permanent, temporary.
Well, my point is, is why would you want to stage equipment and allow something on top of a water body? And if you look at Policy One of our LWRP, it's explicit. It's only to be used for water-dependent uses, not for staging.
Right. Bridge isn't a water-dependent use, I don't know if it is.
The five minutes is up, we're done. Thank you very much. We'll have our attorney go. Thank you. Gisella Marquin.
Hi, happy New Year to you all. I'm just calling as, first of all, I appreciate the presentation by the auditor today. I'm happy to hear that from their perspective, things look good. So I think I just, I'm curious around the the consequences of litigation, ongoing litigation on the village and our finances. And so wondering, you know, if there has been any attempt from the village to try to settle any of these suits and save us some money for these ongoing litigation? And if you can give us some insight around that.
Well, as I said before, I'm not going to talk litigation strategy, but you feel free to reach out to the folks who are suing us and asking them to drop the case. That would be great.
Great.
Thank you. All right. Going on to public hearings. First, we'll have a public hearing. Is one of our planning and zoning board members? And your motion?
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
This is the scheduled referendum. We've already adopted. Yes, second. What we see in a call?
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
So what we're doing tonight is we are setting we're setting a referendum. The referendum will be at the next general election, which is November, I'm sure it says it in here, first Tuesday in November of twenty twenty-one. Right? Right. Second of November, twenty twenty-one, which is the first Tuesday. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay. Nobody in the audience has a hand up? Your motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor?
We're we're actually needed to, we need to adopt the law.
Did we adopt the law already?
No.
No.
Because we changed, we modified the law a month ago.
Oh, boy.
To allow, I know, it's been a long process. We modified the law a month ago to allow the Board of Trustees to choose to delegate someone to conduct a hearing for us, not to make the determination, but to conduct the hearing.
My suggestion, and I adopted that, right? Okay, you're right, you're right. So does anybody have any questions or concerns about the law itself?
Move approval.
Does anybody else have any in the audience? Okay, what we need is a movement to close the public hearing.
Dan moved. Oh, Dan. Dan, you want to close the public here? And I think what we're doing is by adopting this, by adopting this local law, we have to automatically with its schedule, I don't know, I don't know if there has to be a resolution.
It is in a resolution.
Okay, so, so I move that we close the public hearing.
A second.
We call a roll.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, now we have to move adoption.
So moved.
Somebody wants to? In order of seconded?
Yes.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, there you go. Let's make it the law. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item two A, Resolution Authorizing Budget Transfer for Overtime Direct Department.
No. We have to, we have to, we have to schedule the referendum.
I thought we did that, it was in the same resolution.
No, I think there's a second.
I think so.
But there's only one public hearing.
You don't need a public hearing, though, on the resolution to submit the referendum.
I see two different resolutions.
Yeah.
One public hearing, all right.
So there's a resolution to submit Local Law Five of twenty twenty, adopted by the Board of Trustees on, it says December fourteenth, but it should say January eleventh.
So you do refer, or is it adopted? All right.
The electors of the Village of Mamaronek. We just have to make sure the dates are correct, because we thought we were doing this in December.
This resolution says at the general election on the second day of November. Okay, that's right. All right, so we need a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved with, with the changing of the date of December fourteenth, twenty twenty, to read January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, both in the title and in the text.
And also in paragraph, the second paragraph from the bottom on page one.
Right. That's what Kelly said, okay. Move motion?
I did move that.
Second.
Augustin, call roll.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is two A. Two A is resolution to transfer one personnel cost for recreation events. So this is transferring money from softball fund, the kids' cooking class, the adult fitness class, ends up to eight thousand dollars to rec administration. Jerry, this went over because of, we had more events than we were going to have.
No, there's, there's a few items. One of them was the holiday event, the other is the farmer's market. There was very little overtime for the US Open. But this is, the recreation supervisor asked to move money from one account into another account, which of course has to come to, come to the board for approval.
Okay. And just to point out, the Christmas spectacular down in Hubble was amazing. They did an excellent job.
Yeah.
And all the work that they did for it really sets it up to do it easily again in subsequent years.
Somebody want to make this motion?
So moved.
Second.
Augustin, call roll.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, thank you.
Is, the snow removal labor is going to traffic control OT and leaf removal OT. Jerry, you're pretty confident that we'll be okay in the snow removal department, as was.
I'm confident as well as mayor, these requests come directly from the department head. And so he's confident as well. Because snow removal labor was something we didn't touch in last year's budget.
Okay, great. Great. Somebody have any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Natchez? You're muted, Dan.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you.
Mayor, one second. At this point, I need to go out for an emergency. So, so I'll bell out, I'll try to listen in, but, but I think you now can proceed with, without me for a while. Okay?
Okay, I hope everything works out. God bless.
Thank you. All right, thanks.
The next item is the order of bills. The number tonight, five hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Any questions or concerns? Okay, I have one on page five. The bill for White, Ostman, and Hannah, the twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. This is almost war when we hired them to be co-counsel on the on the Hampshire litigation. And if you look at the bill itself, and this is something I think we're going to have to watch. Jerry called, Jerry called the firm to question the bill. And they charged us for the time that Jerry was questioning the bill. I, I don't think that that's a good practice. I don't think we should, I mean, it's a hundred and six dollars. I mean, I'm not going to hold up the bill for that tonight. But this is a bad practice. You know, it's almost, you know, it's almost punitive. If you question a bill, we're going to charge you for it, so don't bother questioning the bill.
Is that even ethical, Bob?
I don't know that it's unethical. It's not something our firm does, but I don't know that it's unethical.
Well.
I've never, I've never heard of this.
It's unfriendly. I'll tell you that. And I think if that's going to be the way they operate, we're going to have to keep a close eye on this bill.
Jerry, when you talked to them about the bill, did you, did you question that, this later after that, when you got the bill?
No, if I call them to question this, they're going to charge me again. So I won't call them to question it. But I didn't know that they were going to charge me for questioning a bill. This was when Victor and I looked at it last time.
Yeah.
And there were some issues with the bill. I called them up and you know, we had to work out the problem. We did work out the problem. They saved more than a hundred and six dollars, but they charged us for it.
I mean, we had, you know, we had a firm also that billed us for doing their invoices. And we stopped that practice, so it's prob, I guess we have to figure out how to check on that.
Yeah, just tell them, I bet us in the future. You know, Jerry, when you become, we're just sending them an email saying, in the future, we're not going to pay you to discuss your bill with you.
Sure, comfortable. No problem.
You'd be delighted. I don't think that's a practice that we should get into. Okay, that's the only question I had. Anybody else have any questions? Somebody want to? The order of bills? Want to say, buddy?
You looking for a motion, Tom? So moved. So moved.
Thank you. Do you want a second?
Second.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you.
There's no old business, new business, resolution authorizing execution of volunteer firefighter cancer benefit program. Jerry, why don't you explain what this is? And this is something that we do for our hardworking volunteer firemen.
Mayor, in the past, the state law had very strict guidelines regarding which firefighters would be eligible for the cancer benefit, much to the credit of Chief Barney and with the assistance of Mr. Sarnoff. We came to realize that approximately seventy-five percent with the new law change at the state level now is authorized to have this coverage. This coverage is a cancer benefit. At our level, I believe it's fifty thousand dollars for the, for the insurance policy. And so we only budgeted a certain amount because we thought we were going to have a handful or a couple of handfuls of firefighters that were eligible. But in fact, because of the law change, and then we found out about it through Chief Barney and Chief Barney's phone calls, we are able to cover many, many more firefighters, which is a good thing for the village. It still comes down to a couple of hundred dollars per firefighter, per insurance, per policy. But still, we need to, we need to move money from the general fund into contract services at the firefighters of about twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions or concerns?
No, I move that we do this. I think that's, I thank Chief Barney for figuring this out.
A second.
Okay, we call.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Hi, and thank you, as Nora pointed out, to Chief Barney for working on this and for all our firefighters, everything they do.
Resolution scheduling a public hearing amended, amending chapters three twenty-six and three twenty-nine, permit parking areas established, and three hundred and forty-seven fees of the Village of Mamaronek. Or you wanted to explain this to the folks at home?
Absolutely, Mayor.
This is a defeat for the.
No.
Would you like for me to, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Can you explain this?
Yeah, this is to change our permit parking stickers going from ten down to three stickers. We are going to be doing away with RP stickers, Regatta Parking, CV stickers, Continental View, and making everything a GP sticker. And it will be for a twenty-four hour day, seven day a week sticker. You will no longer be able to purchase just an overnight or just a daytime. Everything will be for twenty-four hours a day. So that's the first part of the law change. And then the second part, the fees, is changing the current cost of the stickers. And the railroads are going up one hundred dollars a year, the non-resident railroads. We had going up one hundred dollars a year. I believe Trustee Natchez wants to change that. The general parking is going from five fifty a year to six twenty-five, and that will be for all other parking lots. It will be six twenty-five a year for twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week parking.
That's what I got for you guys.
Mayor? Before we make the resolution, I'd like to change the.
I'm not sure I have the right resolution, so just hold on one second.
Can I show you mine?
Yeah, show me.
This is just to schedule the public hearing, Mayor.
Okay, so this is just to schedule the public hearing. I didn't have it.
Correct, to make those changes.
Make those changes. And we will then make the changes to we can propose the changes to the fees tonight, and then we would still have to approve them at the next meeting, right?
You'd have to do it at the public hearing, that is correct. The public hearing would state the, whatever the fees are, and I'm suggesting we change the non-resident fees by an additional hundred dollars.
It's a non-resident, this would be, just to clarify, this, this would. It's a non-resident, this would be, just to clarify, this, this would, this would be non-resident railroads being.
That is correct, which still would be below most, most other communities.
Right, okay.
The fees are located in appendix of the code. The appendix can be updated by a resolution. It just, so that's why we can have a resolution at the next meeting with the.
Okay.
Trustee Natchez request.
At, at, at the next meeting, have a resolution to increase the fees, the same for GP as you have now, non-resident parking for railroads at $100. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, and then that, that would, you know, we don't have to vote on that, we'll vote on that at the meeting. Okay, but that, that's, that's what will be in the resolution. So we need to schedule a public hearing on this law for January 25th, 2021. That's what the resolution I have in my hand says. Is everybody fine with that? Let's see, that's what we have to do.
As lo, as lo, as long as what's in the notice of, in the backup will show the increase, I have no problems.
Okay, that's what we, yes.
If we could have the schedule as part of the backup, that would probably be more clear.
Okay.
For two weeks from now. Or whatever, four weeks from now.
Two weeks from now. And your motion is scheduled to vote here.
So moved.
Second.
Ousino.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, resolution confirming appointment of clerk treasurer. I appointed Mr. Fusco as clerk treasurer at the organizational meeting. I did not know at that time that it also needed to be affirmed by a vote of the Board of Trustees. So I need a motion to move.
So I thank Victor for figuring this out, and absolutely, I move to appoint Augie as clerk treasurer.
Strongly, happily, second.
Ogie call.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes, please.
Winthrop?
Yes, with thanks.
Natchez?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I'm going to vote yes, but I just want to point out that since the, the board already has a hand in appointing the clerk treasurer when we, when we go to talk about the change to the law in the future, but thank you, and I vote happily, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Ogie. Right. Resolution authorizing purchase of snow plows for new park trucks. So we bought a couple of new pickups for the parks. The ones that they have had were rusting out, but we need snow plows for them because the Parks Department does a lot of plowing. They plow, obviously, the parks and they plow the parking lots. So this is to put plows on those trucks. Is that in sum and substance what it is, Jerry?
Yes, 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 sir.
Okay, and for two trucks, the 11,230, each plows $5,615.
Installed.
Yep, installed, installed. With hydraulics involved, right?
Yep.
Okay, I need a motion.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Fusco.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next item on the agenda is communication through board. I see no hands up.
Oh, one, Glenn. Glenn.
All right, Glenn.
Yeah, a couple of items. I know that you're studying about savings with closing our village court and moving it. I'd just like to point out the difference between our situation and Porchester is Porchester surrounds where the Rye Court is. It's in Rye. We have two different towns. So I really can't see where your savings are, where any police officer who gives a ticket in Rye Neck would have to go to the town of Rye. And any police officer who gives a ticket on this side of the river in the Village of Mariner would have to go to the town court. And if you have a police officer who happens to patrol Boston Post Road, he might have to go to both courts. I don't know what the parking situation is up in Rye, Porchester. Where the, where the courthouse is. At the very least, you're talking about a half an hour back and forth for our police officers to travel back and forth and our residents to travel back and forth. Your other problem is usually what you try to do is cluster cases for a police officer. That doesn't necessarily mean everybody's gonna come on time for a police officer. Here, if a police officer has his hearings clustered, he can go to four hearings. If somebody's late, they can just call him back and offer patrol. He's back in the courthouse in five minutes. So you'd have to calculate of, the volume of time that you're talking about sending police officers up to Rye, Porchester, and the convenience of your own residents who now have to spend a half an hour traveling. And again, I don't know what the parking situation around the courthouse is up in Rye to do that. The other thing is, I had asked about how many lawsuits are currently pending against the village. I will repeat, with today's bills, you have approximately $120,000, $130,000 left in your budget with five months to go. And you are encumbered $60,000 for your village attorney, $30,000 for your land use attorneys, and $10,000 for your village prosecutor. That's $100,000 out of that money. You do have $2,000, $200,000 under planning. I would assume some of that money would be to defend against Hampshire. You might want to move $100,000 of it, and then if the snow season isn't bad, you could always put money back into Hampshire. But as of the next meeting, outside of Bob and your other bills, if you have $30,000 worth of other bills, that's it, you're finished on that line. The other thing I, I was asking about is the lawsuits, is I know we have one sorority case open left in the town of Rye. Director Boatyard, it's currently in court. We have three years, we have 2011 through 2013 available on their website. And basically, they're suing for 10 years, and that's a $200,000 liability. In all, we have $400,000 worth of liabilities with the town of Rye that have court dates set. The other three lawsuits are totally covered by the town because of the dates. And you have 800,000 total in, in sororities filed in, in Rye Neck. I have foiled to get the amount of lawsuits that we have against us in the town of Mariner. We should know, do we have any lawsuits that we are defending in the town of Mariner for sororities?
I don't remember, it's off my head.
I don't hear, is that? Do we know that? Yes or no?
Bob, do we have an answer? Jerry?
As, as you know, I don't handle the tax sororities, so I can't tell you off the top of my head what we have pending in the town of Mariner.
The only thing I'm pending anyways, things before.
The, the, the only sororities we have pending would be from 2011 to 2013. And are we currently paying, are we paying for any lawyers in the town of Mariner to defend ourselves for those three years and any sororities?
We don't have that information in front of us, and the time is done, thank you.
Okay. Thank.
Okay. Uh, update from the village manager?
Mayor, nothing at this time.
Update from the clerk treasurer?
Mayor, file for the record is the Marineric library budget and trustee election results.
Was it passed, I'm sure?
Yes.
But light turnout.
It always is. Reports to the village attorney?
Mayor, local law four of 2020, which had to do with the fees for affordable housing developments, was filed and became effective on November 10th.
The law that limited the fees for all affordable.
That's right.
We have before minutes, commissions, boards, and committees. Minutes of the Board of Trustees, special session on November 2050, December 3rd, and December 4th. Work sessions and regular meetings on December 14th, AP and minor item meeting on December 28th, 2020. Minutes of Board of Architecture Review on December 1st, 2020. Minutes of HCZMC meetings on April 15th and May 20th, 2020. Minutes of the Board of Traffic Commissioners on November 10th and December 8th, yes, December 8th, 2020. Minutes of the Arts Council on November 2nd, 2020. Minutes of the Ad hoc Code Review Committee meeting October 26th and October 30th, November 5th and 6th, and December 4th, December 9th, December 11th, December 18th, 2020. And minutes from the Police Reform and Reinvention Committee on November 24th and December 3rd, 2020. And we've had many meetings more since then. Okay, that seems to be the end of our program tonight. Thank you all. I wish you all a happy new year, a safe new year, and when we meet again, there will be a new President of the United States after a free and fair election, and we will all work to make sure that he is successful, because as he succeeds, we will all succeed. Thank you all. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you all.
Night.